Ladies and gentlemen, Smithtown Planning Board is now in session. Would you lead us there with the... Adam?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We thank you.
Blaze?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part one, item one, number 2011-10 Anthony Latiri. Item two, number 2011-01 All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item three, number 2010-06 KVC Holdings. Item four, number 2009-05 FB4 Realty. Part two, item six, number 1059 Prestige Estates. Item seven, number 1,000A Soundview Estates. Item eight, number 773 Scholar Estates. Item nine, number 922 Sesame Estates. Item 10, number 1053A Berg Estates. Item 11, number 911A Glen Hill Northern. Part three, item 12, 288 Application of Olivia Estates. Part four, item 13, the letter of interpretation for the Polish National Church. Part five, item 14, the transfer of development rights for Brent J. LLC. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? Hearing none, no motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered.
Mr. Chairman will now move on to part two of the agenda. Item five, number 1066 Greenbelt Estates. The applicant requests to waive the requirement of installing sidewalks within the subdivision known as Greenbelt Estates, number 1066. The map of Greenbelt Estates, number 1066, was granted conditional final approval from the board on December 21, 2005. This application was approved for a six-lot subdivision on a 6.46 acre parcel fronting on New York State Route 25, Jericho Turnpike, Plymouth Boulevard, Parnell Drive, and a cul-de-sac to be known as Greenbelt Court. At that time, the board approved a performance bond estimate requiring the applicant to install a total of 1,105 linear feet of sidewalks, 208 feet on the south side of Parnell Drive, 150 feet on the north side of Jericho Turnpike, 50 feet on the east side of Plymouth Boulevard, and 697 feet on Greenbelt Court. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the requirement to install all 1,105 feet of sidewalk. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have no objection to the waiver request. The Planning Department conducted a field inspection of all sidewalks in the vicinity of this subdivision and determined that there are existing sidewalks on the north side of Parnell Drive and that no sidewalks exist on Jericho Turnpike or on the east side of Plymouth Boulevard near Greenbelt Court. The Planning Department does not object to the applicant's request to waive the required sidewalks on Parnell Drive since sidewalks exist on the north side of the street, or to waive the sidewalks on Greenbelt Court. However, Planning recommends that the requirement to install the sidewalks on the east side of Plymouth Boulevard not be waived. Additionally, the New York State Department of Transportation has been notified of this request since Jericho Turnpike is a state-owned road, and DOT should determine if the sidewalks will be waived. There is a letter addressed to the DOT attached to your memorandum. The Planning Department recommends the board make this application the subject of an onsite inspection. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for Greenbelt Estates, number 1066.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Yes, would you come to the microphone and give your name and address, please?
Joan, I'm sorry, Joan Kamis, 35, Willard Way, Dix Hills.
Ryan Murray, 130 Commercial Street, Plainview, New York.
Was the property posted affidavit? Did you do an affidavit of posting?
Yes, I did.
You have any comments on what was read?
I just have a question. You're saying that there was some question about being on Plymouth Boulevard sidewalks? And we don't have any houses on Plymouth Boulevard. The houses are all on either... Well, there's two vacant lots on Parnell that we have not built yet, and then the others are on Greenbelt Estates. None of them are on Plymouth. So I'm kind of confused why that came up, that they said Plymouth.
If you look at the right-of-way, they have a right-of-way with... On Greenbelt Estates, you'll notice that they touch Plymouth Boulevard. And that's how they gained access to the property, and that's the road, and they're responsible for that section.
How many feet of sidewalk would be required on Plymouth there?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
Okay.
That's where the driveway is.
Well, that's where the roadway is.
Where it intersects with Plymouth.
That's correct.
Right.
But we felt that it would serve no purpose there because the houses, technically the school bus will be coming down for the children onto Greenbelt Court. So we really couldn't understand why that was an issue on Plymouth Boulevard.
I would just note to the board that we considered this issue with regard to a subdivision that was just immediately to the north of this, if you recall. And the board maintained that sidewalks were important in this particular area, and that's why we're recommending them consistent with the board's policy.
Okay, and what's the reference there to Jericho Turnpike?
Well, if you look, the entire parcel goes down to Jericho Turnpike, and that's a state route. And pursuant to state law, we have to notify New York State DOT of anything that's in their right-of-way, and they make the determination as to whether or not sidewalks should be waived in there.
Is that their property?
That's their property, yes.
How long does that take?
Well, we'll get an answer before the board's next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, now, I was up there, and I noticed that there's been some houses built. Are all the COs complete on those houses?
I would assume that, excuse me, for the houses that have been built and complete, that they have been CO'd. If I'm not mistaken, there's two houses that have not been built on the south side of Parnell Drive.
Parnell has not been built, and today I turned in the final paperwork on Lot 3. It should have its CO by next week. I was waiting for the assessment report, and it was completed today.
Okay. And what about any of the... Anything in the cul-de-sac as far as lighting or anything else in there, Frank? Do you know if that's...
Well, we're not only dealing with the sidewalk waivers, all the lighting...
That's all.
The lighting is still required in that particular area.
Okay.
Gentlemen, the land that butts into Jericho Turnpike, I believe, you know what? I wasn't part of when this paperwork started. I would have to check with Mr. Murray, the owner. This is his son here with me, representing the company. But I believe that land technically is not ours anymore. I believe it may be yours.
No, it belongs to New York State Parks.
Okay, so I was correct.
However, the right-of-way, which is not part of the parks where the sidewalk would be built, is still part of New York State DOT. So anytime you front on a state road, or a county road for that matter, those agencies determine... We're required to notify them of these type of actions. They make the determination because it is their road as to whether these items are necessary. I would suspect, given the location, that it's near a park. I would find it remarkable that they would ask for sidewalks, but still, that's their jurisdiction.
Are we bound by whatever they say?
Yes.
There are absolutely no sidewalks there. I circled the properties again today. There is none on Plymouth Boulevard, and there are none on Jericho Turnpike. In fact, it would be a dangerous situation if they chose to put them on Jericho because we would be the only one. So if people walked on it, then they stepped in the street.
That's not up to us.
No, I know, but I'm saying, I hope they don't rule that way.
All right. You understand we're going to do an onsite?
Yes.
Okay? Now, make sure that that... I was up there the other day, and the sign was laying on the ground.
I had it fixed because I came to town, I saw it.
And just make sure you put something up that makes it sure it stays there so that if anybody comes to the meeting to want to talk about it, that we're able there to say that it was up, okay?
Okay, I'll have them resecure. We did put them back up because I passed by, and I saw it was laying on the ground.
Okay.
So, but he says that the wind had caught it, but I'm going to try putting a board behind it to stabilize it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much. We're going to do an onsite, but first, we want to see if there's anybody here who wants to talk about this.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody here which is there to be heard on this application? Motion for an onsite, please.
In the matter of Greenbelt Estates, number 1066, motion to adjourn for an onsite inspection.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. We thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, under Part Six, Other Matters, item 15, memorandum sent from the Planning Department to the Planning Board regarding the site conditions for All Seasons Motor Lodge, number 2011-10. Counsel for the applicant is present, and he may wish to address the board. I'm not sure.
Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramaco. I represent the Africa. I want to thank the Planning Department for getting this over to me today. I had an opportunity to read it. Most of the stuff there we'd be required to do anyway, at least 1 through 4. The play equipment, I'm not so sure of its location, although Blaze tried to show it to me on an aerial map.
I think it's next to the fence on the south side. It's almost right up against the fence.
That's right.
Okay, so the board, some of the board members have seen it? Good. If you feel that it's more suited to be brought forward towards Jericho Turnpike...
Away from the residence.
Yeah. I'm sure my clients would have no objection.
Do you know if all of these points that we had given you originally, have they all been expected there for whether they were done or not?
No, they haven't been done. We are saying that this board will not vote until such a time as these items are completed. When they are completed, we'll come back before the board and do the inspection.
Does your client there understand what the conditions are?
Are you talking about this?
Yes. To get this done so that we can then vote on the...
I will get it over to him. I wasn't able to get a hold of him today, but I'll fax it over.
Yes, if he would get this done there, we can then handle the application there because that's one of the stipulations that we put.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. We have one other attachment there that was in our original memo, Frank, and the concern there, the application that we had handled some time ago over in Kings Park for Sesame Estates.
Yes.
And we have a letter, and it seems like the man is really concerned about some progress on this application because of the... I can see by his handwriting that he's not probably in pretty good shape.
Well, the question, by the way, we do have a response we received this week from the... This matter was referred to the town attorney. The issue involved this one and Scholar Estates, if the board would recall. We had requests to re-subdivide property that was previously approved in a clustered format from this board. The town attorney has sent a letter to us. I'd like to show it to counsel first before he... So that he would be able to discuss it possibly with the board. But basically, the town attorney has ruled that, and cited the legal cases, that once a clustered subdivision has been approved by the board, it may not be further subdivided even if there is sufficient land available for subdivision. And so I'd like to give that to counsel, and I will then... I will bring this matter up before the next board.
Did you also... There was an attached letter from you or an attached memo from you concerning the yield that referred there to the density rights.
That's correct.
One of the questions that came up there in that application for the fire department, with how many density rights are there, Frank, in the town of Smithtown? About approximately?
What do you... I'm not sure I understand the question you mean. How many properties are eligible?
Well, how many have been outlined as being possible sites there for?
Well, there's a map in the code. I would say approximately, let's say, about 100 to 150 properties.
Okay. Now, do all of them there have a value? That's one of the questions that's always been in my mind. What is the value of a designation? How is it determined?
Well, there's two ways to answer that question. The first is that what is the credits that you would receive? And the credits are dependent upon... The yield is determined, you know, from whatever the health department is. And so that if you have a parcel for which you have a full development right, let's say, a full development right means to build a single-family home, its credit therefore is approximately 300 gallons. And the market rate, if you're talking about what's that being sold for right now, it depends upon the circumstances, but right now, they're about $85,000 per credit, 80 to 100 per credit.
Okay, so that... I think that, you know, you've brought the subject up to us.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that we need to know how many of these, what types of these, that qualify for a one-credit minimum. A one-credit would be the minimum you could get, correct? Unless you put parcels together of lesser value.
In Section 270... 242 of the Town Code, there's a map that's assigned to it that identifies all the properties that we believe that are eligible in town for this credit, at least one credit. And that, you know, we're not saying that the list is comprehensive. That's the list that we provided that we felt that was... If they had chosen, there's no question from any legal point of view that they're eligible. There are other properties, however, that we did not identify that also may be eligible depending upon the circumstances or whatever that particular property applies. So we have identified, as well as the fact we allow for other properties to be retired as well.
Well, I think that the point I'm trying to make here is that this was a memorandum that was attached to a filing there by Mr. Tramaco for his client there for Sesame Estates, and the reference there was to the transfer of density rights as a possibility. And I don't know whether it applies to that application or not.
We asked the town attorney to address both.
He's going to do both?
He already has. He has, and I'll give that memorandum to counsel.
Oh, okay.
And I just saw the memo this week, and Blaze had... We were just talking about before the meeting because I was hoping it was going to be put in the packet. Somehow, it did not get put into the packet because I wanted to give it to counsel. But I will give it to him probably tomorrow.
Okay, and would you make sure that the board gets a copy of that decision?
Yes, I'll send it... We'll mail it separately to the board.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Question?
When do I get to see this letter?
The what?
When do I get to see the letter from the town attorney?
You have to talk to the town attorney about this because they have this policy with regard to... And it's not my policy, it's their policy, that they're not... We're not supposed to give their interpret... Their written correspondence or anything out. So I cannot... I would say call Mr. Zolo tomorrow and see if he is willing to do this. But we have been specifically instructed not to do this.
By Mr. Zolo or by his predecessor?
Well, Mr. Zolo actually just sent a memo to us that reinforced that about interpretations and policies. However, we believe since they're the ones who are making this directive, they're the ones that are free to make any changes to it. But they said we cannot, and we're not even to put into the file.
It was a secret paper, then?
Well, it's considered to be... I don't know the term. These are attorneys that... This is said to be private advice. I'll leave it up to counsel and other attorneys to address this matter, but this was directed at us. It's not our policy. It's not the Planning Department's policy.
I'll check with Mr. Zolo.
But that's a problem I have too, Frank, about secret... You know, that's what happened there with the application for the fire department. We've got a... We had an attorney ask for an opinion there from counsel. Counsel was not able to get an opinion there on that without their... We couldn't talk about it. Then we went there... Then there was a questionnaire about the zoning board. We couldn't... That wasn't possible. And I'd like the board to know whatever happens for the board so that it's not there something that we can't discuss there if somebody asks a question.
Well, all I could do is... I have no problem with releasing these type of documents. This is something that was directed at us. And in fact, I had to purchase a shredder in my budget this year because any documentation that is not to be put into a file has to be shredded. That's Mr. Zolo's directive. That's the latest thing that he's done.
I guess I have to talk to Mr. Zolo because unless there's litigation, everything's a public record, as far as I know.
I'm not going to disagree necessarily with that, but I have to follow the directives of what the town attorney...
I'm sure you do.
Does. And I'm certain that Mr. Zolo's been a town attorney for a while and would probably advise you accordingly as to what is the best course of action on this.
It doesn't mean you can't get it. You just can't get it from us. That's what he's saying.
Yes.
Because you're under a directive from the town attorney, and you have to give it out.
That's correct.
So where do I get it?
But I don't think that's helpful to the board.
Well, sure, if the town attorney said, "Don't give it out," I don't know that he'd take the position that he could give it out, but that's fine, sure.
I'm just a little unclear.
It's a good point. I didn't think of it.
What's... And I'm not quarreling with your position here, but why is there the intermediate step of giving it to counsel to then disclose to us? Maybe you could just enlighten me as to that.
Well, I wanted to show counsel this. If there was something that counsel felt that wasn't addressed or that wasn't pertinent or that didn't directly answer the question, then I would give it back to the town attorney before I would show the board. But I usually would defer to counsel to take a look at it because they would see the letter and my request and then evaluate whether that response legally was there. And in the past, by the way, counsel has found flaws in responses and has asked for more clarification, so...
Well, I think your point is well-made there in your memorandum that there's several types of these subdivisions that we believe that this question will reoccur, and your response would provide guidance on how to deal with these issues in the future. And I don't know how you're going to do that without us knowing what are the guidelines there for the density rights.
Well, I think the town attorney has answered that question, and we're discussing this without the attorney's letter before us. I think... Let me send it to the board, and then I think, once you see it, if there's gaps in the information, I think that's the time to discuss it. But I would also prefer, let counsel see it first before we discuss it because counsel may also feel that it's... The responses may not all be complete.
All right. Counsel, would you get a response for the board?
I'd only ask of Mr. Tramaco, to be... In the packet before us today is a letter dated October 3, 2011, from Frank Derubis to Yvonne Leffrich, and a letter from you dated November 5, 2001. That basically... And of course, the letter from your client. Basically framed the issue.
I can't hear you.
That basically framed the issue we're addressing? The letter of October 8, 2011, and your response?
I think there was another, or a former, or a different secret letter that we couldn't look at. Oh, yeah, and Yvonne Leffrich said... Instructed you that I couldn't see it. And I still haven't seen it. I think the board has seen it.
On the subdivision question of yield? No, there wasn't a... This is...
It was on Machichi.
Machichi is a different... That's the...
This is on additional yield from plus to subdivision, dated October 3, 2011. That basically framed the question that, as you see it?
Yeah.
And the response to that question is what you're looking for, and your client is looking for the same thing, response to that question, whether in fact you can further subdivide. And hardship apparently is the issue?
What's that, Yvonne?
Hardship apparently is the issue?
Yes.
That list Mr. Letterman is raising?
Well, it's also... It was a cluster zone, I guess, when it was originally done. And where, based upon your determination of the yield, Frank, I think we lose a lot, at least.
No, I would not... I think it's... Since we don't have the file before us, I would not agree with that statement. But I'm not... I think since we don't have it before us, let's not get into the details. I think let... I'll give the letter to counsel. If you could talk to Mr. Zolo tomorrow. I have no objections to you seeing the letter.
I mean, my question, and I don't want to usurp the board's authority, but it appears that the adage... An old judge in the city used to say, "Do you want justice or mercy?" Is Mr. Letterman asking for, notwithstanding whatever the town attorney might find, that mercy might be in order in this case because of his particular circumstances?
Well, I want to look at... I want to see what...
I understand. So let's take a look at it.
And I think that Mr. Zolo's in a quandary because in Machichi, he was screaming like I was screaming, "Let us see the letter," which we never did.
Timing is everything.
That's right. Thank you.
I have a question, Frank.
Well, I think what we want to, you know, get to there is some type of an opinion from counsel.
Barbara had a question.
Are you listening to me? I'd like to get some type of an opinion from counsel that's constructive to the board in determining these density rights. Apparently, there's going to be, from Mr. Derubis's there opinion, there's going to be more of these types of applications going to come to us. And I'd like to have something more definitive than something that we can't talk about. Okay?
Are you writing Sesame Estates?
No, no, I'm just talking in general.
Yeah.
Okay?
But this is Sesame...
This is specific there. There was a... It's not in Mr... It's not in Mr. Tramaco's request. It's in an attachment that Frank did to Yvonne Leffrich dated October 3 that appears to refer to the Sesame Estates. Now, whether it did or whether it was or it wasn't that, that's where it's attached to. Okay?
John, I think Barbara had a question.
Yes, Barbara.
I have a question, Frank. The application that we're talking about tonight, Sesame Estates, did that have anything to do with the one that we voted on on June 15? Or is that the different section? Not the application, in other words, the letter, this letter.
We heard the application.
On June 15.
Was it June?
The one... If I could just show you this, it's... It was this one, and that was our resolution, I believe.
All right?
Is that the same as this letter?
Any other questions by the board? Any other questions by the Board?
Yeah, but we didn't adopt it.
Okay.
We didn't adopt it.
Okay, that was a question, did we not? Okay, thank you.
We did not adopt.
Okay, thank you.
No, we did not.
Thank you.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions by the Board? Members, anybody else wants to speak?
We have adoption of the minutes yet.
Okay.
The last item, Mr. Chairman, is the adoption of minutes for the January 4, 2012 Planning Board Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the minutes for the January 4, 2012 meeting.
Second.
It's the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.